I'm going to call the order of the Delaware County Council meeting of October 22nd. It is 9:01 a.m. Before we do the pledge, I would like to announce that the auditor and the chief deputy and the chief bookkeeper are all unavailable, so Rebecca Flowers is going to wear two hats today. She's going to be the auditor and she's going to read the stuff. So bear with her. Bear with her. It's her first job. She's got a...
Jim, believe me, she'll be fine.
Well, I'm not saying she won't. I'm just saying that we need to know how the procedure's going to go because she's going to be doing two things and she'll need just a minute in between there. Okay? Pledge to the flag. Everybody please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Denise, if you will, I didn't talk to you about this, but fill us in on who unfortunately passed away in our office.
Oh, Kida in our office in the back bookkeeping area, her father was the one that had the incident at the Connor Prairie on Sunday morning and was killed.
Very free.
Or very, where did I say? Yeah, very free. And then Janet Kessler, her husband passed away unexpectedly on Sunday morning. So anything, Kida came in yesterday and she, they really think that he had a medical condition that happened before the boat accident.
Okay, thank you.
It was a good weekend for the auditors of the...
Yes, it was, and I just heard about it yesterday and didn't really take the time to find out everything I should have known, so thank you for helping me out. So we'll all keep them in our thoughts and our prayers. Thank you. Call the meeting to order, pledge to the flag. Has the agenda been posted?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
So moved.
Second.
Do you want Jessica? No, I would do this first. See that roll call's on anything.
And who seconded?
I'm just...
Ryan.
Ryan.
Larry Ryan.
Larry did, didn't it?
That's actually Ryan.
Oh, I got it. Okay, Jessica, all in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Please. Anybody opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Alexander?
Here.
Ryan Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Here.
Ms. Chambers?
Present.
Ms. Lassiter?
Here.
Ms. Piper?
Here.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Present.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Sorry.
Mr. Craig Craft is absent. Okay, now I need a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry, second by Jessica. We'll need a roll call on that, please.
Okay, Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes? Mr. Quickenbush? Okay, sorry.
Thank you. He's got me, too.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
You should work the top line.
All right. We'll work with you here. I'll get to this. Just fine. Okay, now if you are ready, we'll start with the transfer agenda.
Circuit Court, Emily. She wants to... She's going to do a transfer from court to the public defenders for the probation officer.
Read each line.
Yep.
The 138. From 138A, 168, 13,000. Probation Officer, 169, or 9,000. Probation Officer, 14,000. Is going to move all the training fees, 186, 18,000.
Moved and approved?
Second.
Moved by Scott, second by Jessica. Any questions on this? This was approved in finance. Roll call.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Thank you. If you happen to skip the pink, okay. Yeah, white. Alex, Alexander, okay. So do you transfer papers? Next. Do you want to do that on the next run?
Uh huh.
Okay. Salary adjustment for $2,500 from counsel to the deputy auditor. $2,500.
Moved and approved?
Okay.
Moved by Scott, second by Jessica. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Hold on, please. There's numbers ahead. Okay, go ahead. There you go. Now I'm down to public defender.
All right.
Okay.
Circuit Court?
Circuit Court again, Emily. Thank you. Okay. Emily, your turn. Salaries, A 129, $20 to B 129, $20. And then she wants to do office supplies for $1,325 to office equipment, 441, $1,325.
Moved and approved?
Second.
Jessica, second by Ryan. Ryan?
Yep.
Okay, this was approved by the Finance Committee with a slight change in the 441 title. On our schedule, it says computer equipment, or computer scanner equipment, and we asked her and the auditor to just change that to what?
Office equipment.
Office equipment. That gives them a little more gravity or levity or discretion on what they use that for rather than tying it down to just one thing. They're actually, she's actually replacing chairs gradually in all departments. Roll call, please.
Hey, Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
He's got me, too.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
You should work the top line.
All right. We'll work with you here. I'll get to this. Just fine. Okay, now if you are ready, we'll start with the transfer agenda.
Circuit Court, Emily. She wants to do a transfer from court to the public defenders for the probation officer. Read each line.
Yep.
The 138.
From 138A, 168, 13,000.
Probation Officer, 169, or 9,000. Probation Officer, 14,000. Is going to move all the training fees, 186, 18,000.
Moved and approved?
Second.
Moved by Scott, second by Jessica. Any questions on this? This was approved in finance. Roll call.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All are ready for the PD office.
Okay, public defender. Okay, she wants to take, or she's going to, she needs, I don't know which way to go. Okay, she's going to transfer $3,000 from transcript fees, $3,000 for psychological testing, $2,000 from investigation fees, and she wants to put them in her supply camp and return fees for $6,000.
Moved and approved?
Second.
Jessica, second by Scott. Before we do this roll call, that's the tough part because she has to go round robin and each time she moves down one alphabetically, so that's why she's, she's got to get used to two things here and one of them a bit complicated. So roll call, please.
Okay, Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Now, before she reads this next one, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve it as amended by the Finance Committee, which the Finance Committee then okayed the amendments from what the original request was, and the sheriff's office managers here, I think there's one other small change, and then I would appreciate a motion to approve this Sheriff 129 as presented. So moved.
Second.
Do you want to explain that one change?
Who seconded it? I did.
Scott and Jessica, I'm sorry. I didn't do my job there.
When I took over February, there was a line on the jail site that's...
State your name.
I'm sorry, Denise Marvin, Office Manager for Sheriff's Office, that was labeled as a training line. That actually was...
Oh, wait a minute. I'm not supposed to do that yet.
Because we're not in the jail yet.
No, no, we're not in the jail yet. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the transfers for Sheriff Department 129 as presented and approved by the Finance Committee. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Now we'll do Jake. I would appreciate a motion for the same thing with one change that she will explain.
So moved.
Second. The training line that is, was listed for the jail actually was where they were paying
all the part-time employees that we have out of. My request is that we change the label of that line from training to part-time so that it coincides with what we actually do with that line, and I would like for it to be retroacted back to January.
We need a separate motion to do that. Probably should. Oh yeah, okay. We'll go ahead and...
We'll go ahead and roll call on this one as presented.
What line are we looking at? So we need to change.
What is training?
It's not over here. I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself.
Jane, we're basically looking at two pages on here of jail changes, and rather than have her read all these, we're just going to approve them as presented if that's okay with everybody.
Right. I would just... All of these are just taking... I was just wondering what line it is we're going to change from training to overtime.
We'll get to that one right after we do this up here next year.
We need to do the, roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Now, that's a little bit my fault. I got ahead of myself there that this change in that title has nothing to do with the transfers.
It's line 195, currently listed in the jail as training, but my predecessor was using that for part-time employees. That's what I continued using it as, and we would like to change the title of it to part-time. It actually has been changed to part-time in the 2020 budget.
So the motion I need is to change the title of line 195 in department...
They've changed it.
145.
145, from the word training to part-time.
So moved.
Well, that too meant to make sure that it's retroacted back to January.
Okay, you're right. Thank you, Larry. Let's track you to January 1st.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Larry.
Ryan.
Ooh, I thought that was Larry, too.
You need to learn how to throw your voice. Maybe come from the very side.
Oh, I can do that.
Okay, we're ready for that. Roll call, please.
And Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Sometimes it gets in the, I get in my way because I go to the Finance Committee meetings
also, and we discuss all this stuff, and then I don't get it on the agenda, just right in my brain up here. So go ahead, Jessica.
We had to, correctional officer bill, this was after our meeting on Thursday. We have someone that wants to come back to work, so he's already through all the training. He could immediately hit the ground running. We don't have to put him with someone, he can work on his own, but that would require me to transfer the remaining funds from, the officer would just let go his line to a new line, but I know that it wasn't on the agenda. We could start in Thursday if we could make this move.
This is a transfer?
Yes.
We need very specific numbers, and then we'll ask for a motion to do that.
It's line, I would take from E 139, correctional officer, minus $8,075.13, plus F 139 would add $8,075.13.
That's Department of 145.
Correct. There's the correction. Correct.
What was the second number?
F 139. Okay.
Moved and approved.
Second.
That was Larry. Yeah. Got it. And I didn't look. See, Larry, you're behind Jane, and then your voice doesn't carry around to me.
Sometimes I'm on the other side, Jane. When I come in, I'm on my neck.
Okay, well, my fault. I can't hear.
Grabbing counsel.
Anyway, here we go. We need a motion, and we have a motion, and we need a roll call.
And Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Jessica, second by Scott. Questions? This was approved by Finance. It's an obvious thing there. They have more money in health insurance than they need, so they're going to pave away, I guess. Roll call.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Okay, bridge?
Bridge. Looks like the same thing.
Same thing. 13,000 for insurance to overtime.
Moved and approved? Second.
By Jessica, second by Jane. Roll call.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, DCC.
Department of Community Corrections.
Okay, you want to take some part-time money, $13,078, put it into new lines, 133 and 138.
Yes, full-time line.
Moved and approved?
Second.
Moved by Jessica, second by Scott. Any questions? This was approved by Finance. It's an obvious thing there. They have more money in health insurance than they need, so they're going to pave away, I guess. Roll call.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Okay, bridge?
Bridge. Looks like the same thing.
Same thing. 13,000 for insurance to overtime.
Moved and approved? Second.
By Jessica, second by Jane. Roll call.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Okay, bridge?
Bridge. Looks like the same thing.
Same thing. 13,000 for insurance to overtime.
Moved and approved? Second.
By Jessica, second by Jane. Roll call.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, DCC.
Department of Community Corrections.
Okay, you want to take some part-time money, $13,078, put it into new lines, 133 and 138.
Yes, full-time line.
Moved and approved?
Second.
Moved by Jessica, second by Scott. Do you want to explain this to the board?
Yes, this is part-time money from the Department of Correction Grant that we have, and we'd like to move it from the part-time line to the two new positions we've created for pre-trial services, and those are currently part-time. One is a part-time position, and the other one is a new position that will hold until certain November, and we would just want to transfer that money over so that we can pay them out of existing grant money now.
I want to ask you a question I didn't ask you the other day because I think everybody should hear it. We created a new position in the courts to monitor pre-trial candidates, I guess we'll call them, detainees. I think you explained it the other day, but I'd like everybody to hear how this differs from that position.
The case manager that we have at Community Corrections, we get the names that probation is not going to take on pre-trial services, so that Community Corrections takes the more moderate and higher-risk people, whether it's on the jail release program, and then that case manager, after she does the assessment, she is also one of our education facilitators in our building. So she kind of has two hats. So we take the higher-risk people that probation, that will not come out to regular probation, pre-trial probation.
Is that the one that the state's requiring that they spend 200 hours or something?
That's the, well, the state requires that on every moderate and high-risk offender. The peer recovery coach is a new position that will help get those hours. That's a different position.
Okay, we're talking about that later, though, right?
Yes.
Okay. Explain that then so that they, everybody hears that if you would, please.
That position is a peer recovery coach that is designed to help the offenders at Community Corrections or through probation in the courts get everything done needed. There's about 200 hours that is supposed to be spent with every high-risk offender, and so one case manager with a caseload of 30 cannot do that, and the peer recovery coach is someone that is in recovery themselves, maybe they have a criminal history themselves, so they are more relatable to our clients and hopefully will help them get through some of these services.
Just within the last few days, there's been a giant settlement in court with some states and municipalities with these, like about four drug companies. Millions and millions of dollars are going to go into these communities. I just think it's important to point out what's happening in this community constantly is you hear that jail's overcrowded, you're going to hear later from the coroner for his request, and this addiction thing is a lot of the problem. Is that not correct?
That would be correct, yes.
That's why you're happy to do this one-on-one stuff. Any questions from the councilman? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Okay, now we're ready for prosecutor lit.
Is it still 730101? No, it's changed again. Okay, give us the change before we make the motion.
Yes. We're going to keep $1,022.13 in 105 so that we can pay out that person's seven days
Yes. We're going to keep one thousand twenty-two dollars and thirteen cents and one oh five so that we can pay out that person's seven days that she worked. So the remainder, what's going to go in A one oh five is six thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Six thousand two hundred?
Seventy-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents.
I thought that's what you did the other day.
Well, we didn't take the seven days out that she's going to be paid when I did payroll. I realized that we needed to leave money in there to pay her out, so.
Yeah.
Six thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Motion, please.
So may I?
Second. Jessica, second by Scott. Question of the council. Rule call.
Ms. Fassler?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers? Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Quikembusch?
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to move to financial agenda, new appropriations.
Paying coroner. Three eleven autopsies for a hundred thousand. Including eleven x-rays. Rean.
Move to appropriate.
Move by Jessica. Second. Larry. Larry, got you. Second by Larry. We had a lengthy discussion about this in finance. The recommendation of finance was originally to ask to have this reduced, but after a lengthy discussion and the fact that they have fifty-nine thousand dollars worth of outstanding bills at this time, and probably have more by now. Are you prepared to say anything?
Rean Reed Office Manager. I do have some numbers for Scott. We're about eighty percent like Scott was last year and for 2017 for autopsies.
Okay, is that something that you could email us?
Sure.
So we could kind of see that numbers. What, what I had asked is to kind of go back through the previous coroner and just see how the, the numbers were.
Twenty-seventeen, I had a hundred and ninety-seven deaths. We did autopsies on everyone but thirty-nine, and these are just coroner's cases, not non-coroner's. Twenty-eighteen, we had a hundred and sixty-seven deaths. We didn't do autopsies on thirty-one. And this year, we're at one ninety-two. That's before the weekend that we just had quite a few. And twenty-seven, we have not done autopsies on.
Well, I think some, some of the concern when we saw this big number come through was, okay, are we doing things, you know, as good or close to as good
Yes.
as we were doing before, and you believe that we are?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We're around eighty percent for about, since twenty-seventeen.
Our goal was to reduce this amount for this meeting, and, and there's just
There's no.
I mean, there's, there's a lag.
Yeah.
I mean, they are, it is what it is, and there are people dying, and we've got to take care of it, so.
And we are negative, I think, fifty-nine thousand, and that was for the beginning of September.
Do you guys have any more questions?
Well, I was just trying to take a quick look at the coroner's budget here. His final budget for 2019 is a hundred and eighty thousand, so this is going to make it two hundred and eighty thousand in one year, just to show the audience and the public how serious this is, because the coroner assured us that a lot, a lot of these percentage-wise are from ODs and drugs. And he had like two, I guess, the morning we had our finance committee meeting.
Correct.
Now, that's serious business, and, and like I said, some people, I don't know whether Indiana was in on that lawsuit or not, but it was states and some towns that were involved in this lawsuit, and I heard on the radio this morning, I was thinking I was hearing like twenty million dollars for certain issues and twenty million for other issues, and so this is a social problem that is going across our country. And I hate to get on the soapbox, because you guys don't like to hear me talk, but these are people bringing drugs into our country, and this, I guess the sheriff left when he first stepped in here, that they're bringing into our country and then into our communities, correct?
That's right.
They're not making meth in the local now anymore. They've kind of got that shut off. You want to speak to that in just a minute?
Yeah, Jeff Stanley, chief deputy. So our narcotics division, we are doing something a little different now than we have in the past. So we are focusing more on the drugs that are coming into the community rather than the drugs that are here and doing the street level dealers. So we, we teamed up with the FBI and the DEA, and we actually have a couple pretty major cases going on right now. Hopefully, they'll come to resolve in the near future, but they do take time. You know, so we, we are looking at what's coming into Muncie, what's coming into Delaware County, and we want to try to knock that off before it gets here. I mean, it's, it's an epidemic, epidemic everywhere, and, you know, I just came from Red Ribbon Breakfast in Prosecutor and Coffin, he said it fast. He said, you know, we're, we're, it's, it's an epidemic that we're not going to wrest ourselves out of, you know, try to, to make this go away, but there are consequences for the people that are doing the crimes. So, you know, sending them to jail, that's not the answer. However, if you do not do something for the consequences, they're just going to keep doing it again, so.
Thank you.
That's, we were, again, you said it, we were at the Red Ribbon Breakfast this morning, and there's a group of kids that is going to go around to thirteen elementary schools in town, and, and you were there too, and, and reported about kids that, I thought it was really interesting, the kids that are in the 4-H program. Will you get up and just say that part of it? I don't want you to have to do your whole speech, but.
Oh, you don't want my whole speech?
Well, I'll take it again, but.
Okay, so, good morning, Molly Hunt, Delaware County Purdue Extension. I'm the Health and Human Sciences Director, or Health and Human Sciences Educator, and also the county director, and so for Red Ribbon Week, I was invited to be on the panel, which was interesting since it was the prosecutor and somebody from the Indiana State Department of Health and Addictions Medical Counselor. So as you guys know, 4-H is one of the only federally funded and designated youth development programs, and what we know is that 4-Hers are four, or two times more likely to make healthier choices than non-4-Hers. We know because of positive youth development that they're not just, it's not just showing livestock. We provide skill-building, meaningful adult leadership, and long-term caring adults, and what this creates is connected, caring, and competent young folks who are more civically connected and make more contributions to their community, and because of that, they have reduced risk-taking behavior. And so that is a great part of what 4-H offers in Delaware County and in all ninety-two counties in the state of Indiana.
Shameless plug for 4-H, but Jane, Jane was there checking people into the breakfast. Jane Brando was there checking people into the breakfast. There are a lot of people involved in, in trying to find some solutions to this. It's not for a, a lack of trying, but it's a big problem. Thank you.
I have a random question. Do we happen to know what percentage of these autopsies are from like homicide versus overdose versus like, like, for example, my dad was stubborn and didn't go to the doctor for seven years and passed away at home, and they had to do an autopsy on him because there were no records. So do we know of what percentage?
We're probably at forty percent right now for overdoses.
Okay.
Out of all the autopsies that we do. Thirty percent probably for suicides.
Mr. Stanley?
What, what are we dealing with? Are we dealing with more heroin, meth? I mean, what are, what kind of drug are we really looking at, or is it just a plethora?
So we, we have done a drastic shift for heroin. Heroin was, was the major one over the past probably two or three years. However, the past year, year and a half or so, crystal meth is, is our, I guess, very choice for this area. And it's, it's not a meth that they're cooking in the homes like they used to a few years back. That's kind of going to the wayside. This is coming from across the border, it's coming from the south, and, you know, until we put a stop on it outside of Delaware County, it's just going to continue to come in here.
Okay.
Yes. And when it's laced with the fentanyl, carfentanil, that's, it's just a perfect storm. Perfect storm.
The two biggest ones that I've seen on the autopsies this year are the meth and the fentanyl.
Well, like they talked about this morning on the, on the panel, it's combinations of, of alcohol and these other drugs and marijuana and the whole, the whole thing that they're, they're having to deal with, and, and, like I say, there's a lot, a lot of people trying to work on this issue. It's not, you know, we get, a lot of times we get people coming in that say that, you know, we're not doing anything. Well, I, I beg to differ. I mean, after that panel this morning and seeing how many people are involved in this, I, I, we are, it's just a big problem. It's going to, going to take a lot of effort.
One of the reasons I was almost late this morning was because there was a piece on ABC, Good Morning America, interviewing the grandson of Kirk Douglas and the son of Michael Douglas, forty-one years old. Been in prison, he's been in solitary confinement for two years. I just picked up tidbits as I was getting ready, my wife was watching it. She recorded it for me, but it, it was just a very interesting piece from the point of view of an addict and how, how they challenge their own bodies to take more and more of this. It's, it's an alarming situation. My wife doesn't like me to mention it, but I will refer this one. One of my sons, who is in his fifties, since he was about sixteen years old, and he's coming around, and that's good news for me, but our community needs more of this good news. Okay, rule call.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Fassler?
Yes.
Ms. Piper? Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Quikembusch?
Yes.
Okay, we're ready for the coordinating council of alcohol and drug abuse. This is their annual budget, I guess you call it. State your name, please.
Bruce Rector.
Okay, you want to go ahead and read us our numbers?
Yeah, the FDA Director, seventy-five hundred dollars. Prevention and Education Grant, seventeen four hundred and seventy-six. Intervention and Treatment Grant, seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five. And just along, reinforcement grants, ten thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So I need you to please sign out, so your name and your title on the key on the panel.
Okay, this was approved by finance, I need a motion.
Move to her.
Okay. Jessica, second by Scott. You'd like to say? And this, you're, you're actually taking the position that Mary Hart retired from, is that correct?
I'm the board president, I'm not the executive director.
Okay, okay, thank you. But Mary's who we're used to seeing. Any questions from council? Seeing none, rule call, please.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Fassler?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Quikembusch?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you want to do the next three together, some are all?
Cost and Incorporated.
Yes. So next three. Sure.
I'll go ahead and, I'll make a motion to approve those as presented.
Second.
Oh, you're so kind.
Great.
Emily Anderson Court Administrator. So at finance, I told the committee that I would talk to Ashley and get a better explanation for you, so I'm going to present that. Let me find my notes. So she, Ashley, went after a VOKA grant and got it. She didn't think she would get it. So what this VOKA grant is doing, it's increasing pay on three current employees that are already granted, already funded from a grant from part-time to full-time. Then that pay matches the other full-time positions except for, it's seven hundred and fifty dollars more because she thought she was putting fifteen hundred dollars in for raises, but we only got seven fifty, so it's just, it is what it is. They're getting a little bit more than the other full-time employees. She tried to match it as close as possible. It's also creating one new full-time position. In doing this, every employee that she has knows that if this funding does not get refunded next year, she's going to go for the VOKA grant every year. It's our understanding that it's pretty well-funded, that if this funding doesn't come through next year, they all go back to part-time, and that's just how it is. Every staff member's made aware of that, and they, they are in agreement that if, if that happens, they all go back to part-time. When she hires a new employee that's going all grant-funded, they're going to be aware of that as well. So if, if this does not come through next year, that new employee will just not have a job the next year. All benefits have to come out of other grants because VOKA requires the benefits are matched out of other grants. They're only funding part of the salary, so they will only fund part of their benefits. She wasn't sure exactly how to write the grant, was the very first time she ever wrote for this grant, so all the benefits are coming out of J-CAP, but next year, part will come out of the J-CAP grant and some will be funded out of VOKA. There is one benefit coming out of VOKA this year, which is FICA. So it's all, all these grants are working together to fund all these positions. And then the GAO CASA donation fund request that's in there, the employee's going from part-time to full-time as well, and part of the salary comes out of the donation fund and VOKA. So all these grants are working, interacting kind of together to give her a full staff so that she can move forward in trying to staff her, her, her department, what she needs. So she's gone after these grants to, to staff her department. Does that make sense? I didn't understand it, so I was like, you're going to have to tell me what this, you know, what, what you're doing, but that's what, that's what all this is about.
It, it, we, we discussed it at finance, and
Yeah.
I'm not sure I still understand it, and I just saw something here that I didn't realize before, but why did she keep money in part-time if she's moving everybody to full-time?
Well, it's still part-time, it's still being funded out of part-time. That account line's staying there, so part of the salary comes out of a part-time account, and part of it comes out of VOKA, making a full-time position. So the money still comes out of part-time, that money's still being used, but when they get full-time pay out of VOKA, making it a full-time.
They're going to be paid out of part-time for full-time?
Right, so part-time money comes out of here.
You don't have to transfer that?
No. So when, when they go to payroll, part of the salary's paid out of here, part of it's here, and makes it a full-time. Yeah, so we're not changing money around.
And since it's a grant, you don't have to
Right.
do a new line item?
Right.
Okay.
And then if anything goes away, it just goes back to same line items, just different pay. It'll all be done through payroll, pretty much.
Okay. Did I get a motion? You gave the motion, didn't you? Didn't you give me the motion on that? I remember.
Yeah, basically me.
Okay.
As, as presented.
Okay, I got it right here, Scott and Jessica. Anybody else want to talk? Questions? Rule call, please.
And Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Fassler?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Quikembusch?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So that takes us to the assessment. Eleven eighty-eight, that's just a simple little thing.
Additional money for his perp to close out the year.
He's, he's short.
Yeah, the, 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 county has said that they just informed me that we shortened that line item, we're just topping that off.
Okay. Move to her. Move by Scott. Who was that down there?
I'll second.
Larry. I'm going to let you motion, Larry. What the heck?
I'll second.
Okay, I got you.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Fassler?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Mr. Quikembusch?
Yes.
Becky hanging in there?
Yes, Jane.
I've heard about Becky talking about ten years. Becky knows pretty many things during the day when it comes to verbal conversation. That's good morning, I'm going to lunch, and good evening. There's a whole lot of work done in between. Good job, Becky.
She's working on it. She's doing two hats today. You know, I don't recall, as long as I've been on both boards, that somebody did both jobs at the same time.
Why don't they?
You're doing good. You're doing good, thank you. Inmate medical care.
Ms. Prue?
Move by Jessica.
Second.
Jane.
Jane.
This is just allowing them to use fees that they collect for different medical things to pay for inmates' medical needs. Approved by the finance. Rule call, please.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Fassler?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers? Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Quikembusch?
Yes.
Okay, now you want to read the drug court grant?
Drug, okay. Drug screens, three ninety-six, they need fifteen thousand seven oh five. Three ninety-three travel and training, eleven seventy. Three ninety-five incentives and recognition, thirty-one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Move to her.
Second.
By Jessica, second by Scott. Okay, you want to explain a little bit about what drug court grant is, please?
Yes, this is our, excuse me, Jane Brando, Community Corrections. This is our yearly Indiana Supreme Court grant. They award grants to the state problem-solving courts, and this grant is our drug court and veterans court. It helps cover the cost of our clients' drug screens and then travel and training for staff, and then incentive, our incentive program for the drug court clients.
What does incentive and recognition cover? I mean, what do you?
We actually have a monthly drawing that Judge Pike does in drug court and veterans court, and so any person that is involved with drug court and veterans court that has tested, claimed, paying their fees, going to treatment, there are any monthly drawing for gift cards. And so that covers the cost of buying the gift cards. We also have lanyards, cups, and then their graduation tokens that they get.
So this goes straight to the offenders?
Yes.
Is that a good word?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else? Rule call, please.
Um, Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Fassler?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Quikembusch?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quikembusch?
Yes.
Paying out her JDA grant. Two eleven supplies, she needs three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Three oh four monitoring clients, she wants sixty thousand six sixty-eight ninety-six. Three ninety-three travel and training, she's twenty-nine eight thirty. And four forty-one office equipment, sixteen forty for her JDA grant.
Move to prove.
Second.
Questions?
Ms. Alexander and Ms. Prue?
Yes.
Okay, from the finance committee, I put ditto. So we proved that in the finance committee. Rule call, please.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Wetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes. Ineligible home stay. Ready for that? Ineligible home stay?
Yeah, but there's nobody here. Eligible home stay, $10,000, contractual 310.
I, I can talk for it. Move approved.
Second.
Scott? Jessica?
Second.
This is money that will be used to hire a financial consultant. I'm not sure of credentials, but I believe she, the person is retired from Whitinger Associates to help the auditors department create the new accounting procedure that's been required by the state of Indiana. And according to our auditors, some counties are paying as high as $150,000 on a contractual basis to the professional accounting firms that are doing this for them. But he has chosen to do it in-house and believes that this person is qualified and has been helping them get started on almost like a voluntary basis. This person is, I believe, retired, I'm not sure on that, but is charging us half the fee that the accounting firms normally charge for these services. It's kind of a situation where we have an interested citizen that wants to help out that is knowledgeable of this type of accounting procedure. And so that's what's for. It was approved by the finance committee. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Wetzel?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes.
I had a letter for a memorandum in my email. Is that not right? When I got an email from Denise, I had a transfer of the document.
Before, it might be old.
Yeah.
I didn't get it. Unless they were there this morning, and I didn't look this morning. Denise would know.
No, there's not one.
Because they, ask Denise.
Well, in that case, motion to approve transfers and to amend salary organs with like reductions.
Second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Wetzel?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes. Moving right along. Anything from tax abatement committee? No, nothing. Not that I'm aware of. Okay, we have an appointment to discuss the visitor's bureau. We have an appointment from the county council that I got a report that was not attending the meetings. And that has been verified by that person, direct contact. The comments were that his job conflicted a lot of the time when these meetings were on, and that he runs the motel, a motel here in town. I'm not sure which one, but that his job is to run the place. He's the chief cook and bottle washer, and he can't make the meetings. And it's kind of similar to what we had to animal control here recently. We had the same problem with the housing authority, where people volunteer for these things, and then for one reason or another, they can't proceed and attend the meetings. So therefore, I'm gonna recommend that we have a motion to remove Jared Owen from the visitor's bureau board. I'll make, second. Jessica?
Yes.
Okay. Second. Any questions?
Now, do we, does the board still have an attorney on there? Because I think that would...
Yes. That's not necessarily our obligation. We've just always kind of taken that obligation as a counsel.
But I think the board is required to have an attorney.
Yes, it is, yes, ma'am. But we have two from our group.
Both named Jared.
Yeah. So?
Well, not now.
Any other questions? Okay. Ready for another roll call?
Yeah, just a step, please.
Just one, I guess one other thing to add to that. We sat down and talked to him about this issue, and the latest meeting, he was not able to attend as well after we had gotten.
Yeah, I can't, it's not a bad thing. I mean, his, his job is very important. I'm sure he works for a larger corporation, that best he take care of that motel. But we need to put someone on there that will add some new concepts and ideas, I believe.
Who motioned and seconded?
Jessica made the motion, Scott made the second. We're ready for roll call.
Hey, Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Wetzel?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes. Okay, now then, I'm gonna open the floor, because Scott and I have had some discussion about this and replacing this person. And I took it upon myself to be a little political. I called my county chairman, asked him if he had any ideas. After I discussed this with him for a while, I suggested to Scott, I called Scott and suggested he call him, because it sounded like to me he might be the best qualified person for this job because of his profession. He's a computer website guy, that he actually has one account that I'm aware of after the conversation with him, that he handles an account for Grant County, and he likes what they're doing over there. So I think he would be an asset to this board. But I did want to interject the fact that that's how this came about as far as his appointment. I'd already been notified about Mr. Owen's inability to make the meetings, and had met with him, Jane was there, Scott was there. And he talked with us candidly about this. We didn't tell him at that time we were gonna remove him, but after, after we did meet there, we decided to remove him. So with that, I will open the floor for a motion to replace.
I'll make a motion to appoint Victor Whitehead to the remaining term.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion?
How long is that remaining term?
According to the county record, it's end of 2020. According to the visitor bureau records, it's the end of 2019.
I looked it up.
And, and you're assuring us it's 2020, right?
Right.
I'll, I'll give you a copy of this afterwards, so we can reconcile that if we need to.
That, I don't know where that came from, but our records, our records that we keep?
Yep.
It's 2020. And I looked on the minutes also.
Yep, I saw that.
Yeah, I had to avail it.
Now, Jared will be notified.
I'll write a letter, yes. Denise, help you write a letter. I'll write it. We'll do it together. Okay, then Scott made the motion to appoint Victor Whitehead.
I guess I have two cents to share, so I think one of the...
Did I get a second?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we have a lot of opportunity to really grow and expand our visitor bureau presence, and I think someone like Victor, having experience in web hosting and social media, I think can really help boost. So I think that'll be great to have someone with his skill set on the board to make sure we're moving into future years and keeping up with technology and what other communities are doing and benchmark from those. I think he'd be a good fit.
Well, that was the thing, I didn't really call him for the reason, and then I, you know, it's kind of like, gee, Victor, what about you? You know, after I talked to him a while, and he said he'd consider it. So I called Scott, and Scott then called Victor and talked to him about it. Now, I have another thing I have to ask Mr. Hughes about. Effective July the 1st, Victor Whitehead is a tenant in my building. Does that, should I abstain?
This is not, not a compensated position.
Okay, okay. Well, I needed your advice on that, right? I don't see any reason you would have to. Okay. Very good. Anyone else wanna say anything? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wetzel?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes. Okay, now we're gonna move on to ordinances, which we haven't done. We're going to move on to resolutions, which have one, that is 2019-034, it's tabled. Does anyone wish to untable this resolution? Made a motion to untable.
I'll make a motion to take resolution 2019-034 off to the table.
Second.
Is that you, Larry?
Yeah.
Thank you. Scott made the motion, Larry made the second. Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Wetzel?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
No.
This is to take it off the table?
Doesn't have to be you, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Piper?
No.
Yes. Mr. Payton?
Now, we're open for discussion for resolution 2019-034. I believe there is a motion on the floor. I don't have the notes on it as to who made the motion or the second, but it was to approve because we always motion to approve that particular resolution. And we have discussed it. It's the creation of Circuit Court 6. And it's not actually the, as it says on the agenda, it wouldn't be the creation of Circuit Court 6. It would, the ordinance reads that in a nutshell, the county council doesn't believe we will be able to fund a sixth court. Mr. Hughes, you want to say anything?
I don't have an ordinance.
It's a resolution. It's a resolution 2019-034.
Okay, I have that.
Well, that's it.
But that's what we just untabled.
Mm-hmm. Now, we're going to vote yes or no on the ordinance for the resolution.
Right, you're calling it an ordinance, okay.
No, I'm not calling it an ordinance. It's a resolution. We didn't have any ordinance. You got me saying it now. Anyway, since there's no further discussion, I would like roll call on resolution 2019-034.
Mr. Wetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
No.
Ms. Piper?
No.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Payton?
Yes. Now, I have a question of Mr. Hughes. Do you forward that on behalf of the council to that state review board?
No, that wouldn't be our responsibility. I would just forward this back to the judges.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any.
I'd like, does the council okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Mr. Carroll, county treasurer, sorry for holding you up till last, but that's the way our duty works. He has a presentation to make to the council. He's sent us some information, and I see he sent us some more information today. So we're going to be open for discussion on his proposal to invest county funds in what's called the Hoosier Fund. Mr. Carroll, what is yours?
Hey, Carroll, county treasurer. Reason we're here is to requesting the council to approve, the treasurer to utilize the services of the Hoosier Fund to invest public funds of the county. I brought Mr. Fritch here to answer any questions and present what's, what to hand out to all of you about the background of the company. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Fritch.
Thank you. My name's Kurt Fritch, I'm the program administrator of the Hoosier Fund. And if we have just a few minutes, I can go over this fairly quickly, but then if you guys want to stop me at any point in time, ask some questions, feel free. Basically, the Hoosier Fund is a money market fund. If we go to tab one, the title's what is the Hoosier Fund? But conceptually, it's a money market fund allowed by state statute specifically designed for units of government. It's not to take the place of your bank, it's another option to hopefully increase your interest income in conjunction with your bank. Our yield right now is 2%. I know, talking to Ed earlier today, and that's a money market rate, which means if you ask for your money today, by noon, you'll get your money today. Afternoon, you'll get your money tomorrow. Works kind of like your bank. If you ask for your money today, you'll get your money today up until a certain cutoff time. Our yield right now is at 2%. Speaking with Ed earlier today, you know, some of the local banks are offering anywhere from 1.3% to 1.8%. So obviously, our yield is substantially higher than what your banks, the local banks right now are offering. The next page is the benefits of, the next page should be what the allowable investments are. We're only allowed to invest in exactly what Ed is allowed to invest in. Again, it's by statute, we have to follow 513. So all the investments that we make dovetail with the same statute that county treasurers are under. The next page is just the benefits. First and foremost, we're concerned with safety. Make sure these are taxpayer dollars, that they're in the safest possible investments. We are only allowed to invest, like I said, it's 513, which is the same investments that you can invest in, and those are the safest investments that the state allows you to be in. The liquidity, like I mentioned, you can get your money on a daily basis. Hopefully, you have a competitive rate, competitive rate of return. And then we have no outgoing fees, no wire fees, no maintenance fees that are charged. And then also, we have a, we elect a treasurer and assistant treasurer of the existing participants to be the eyes and ears of all the participants, to make sure that everything I'm doing is according to statute and correct. Right now, those two, the treasurer is the treasurer from IPS, and the assistant treasurer is the treasurer for Carmel Clay Library. So anytime I make an investment, I have to get their approval. They make sure that either any bank account that I open, any investment I make, is in accordance of 513. So the next page is just the operations, how we actually operate. We hire US Bank as our custodian. If you folks were to be, come and participate in the fund, you wire your money directly to the US Bank, you don't wire any funds to me. The only people on that bank account are the people that you folks allow to transfer money in and out. I personally am not on any of those accounts. Whenever you wanted money wired back, the money comes right back to the county or whatever account Ed sets up for the, we have one standing account. account Ed sets up for the, we have one standing account. So, the money, wherever the money wired, is wired from, the money goes right back to that account. The only people allowed, obviously, to effectuate or wire are whoever Ed designates. There are also the fund accountant. I don't make up any numbers. I don't figure out what your daily accruals are. It's all US Bank. Their portal, their website that you go to, the Hoosier Fund website, there's a link to go to the US Bank's back office operation. It's their portal, their, their back office operation that does all the fund accounting. They, like I said, they do the daily accruals, and they also issue the monthly statements. So, it's a totally impartial third party that does all the back office operations for us. And then, at the end of the year, we actually have a local accounting firm do an audit of the fund. The next page is just an area, what kind of assets you guys can put into the Hoosier Fund. It can be anywhere from, if you have excess general fund balances, rainy day funds, obviously, that you may need on a, on a daily basis or in an emergency situation, kind of funds you really can't tie up for long periods of time. Those would be the appropriate funds to put into our kind of fund. And the next page is just my information. What I'd like to do is really go under tab two, because these are what I call our comfort letters and our legal opinions. That first page, as you can see, the very last signature on the page is the Office of the Attorney General. Way back in 2006, we started this program, and the state was interested in actually participating in our pool. But before the state can, can participate, they had to get the interlocal agreement approved by the Attorney General's Office. And I just like to put this in here because the highest legal authority we have here in the state has approved it for the state. So, hopefully, that should give you folks some comfort that it's been, it's been vetted. Next is the State Board of Accounts. We've gone to the State Board of Accounts. As you probably well know, the State Board of Accounts is a post audit agency. They come in at the end of the year after you've already closed your books. As long as I follow 513, they don't take exception. That's what that letter states right there. The next five pages are the legal opinion from our attorney. Our attorneys were Baker &amp; Daniels down in, down in Indianapolis. I don't know if anybody's familiar with those folks, but they're a highly regarded firm down in Indianapolis. And those five pages basically say that this is a legal investment for units of government. And then, the next page is another letter from the Attorney General's Office, and you'll see it's made out to Brian Bosman. I'll explain that here in a second. Back in '09, one of our clients asked us, I don't know if you're familiar with the PDIF, the Public Deposit Insurance Fund. Anyhow, the state of Indiana is the only state in the country that has this PDIF, and it's a separate segregated fund that has roughly $300 million in it. And so, if any government, if any bank fails and a government entity has over what the FDIC limit is, those funds are there in order to protect the taxpayers' dollars. So, question was asked by one of our clients, yeah, the funds that I put in local banks that are taxpayers' funds, are those covered by the PDIF? So, as a private citizen, I can't, in a private firm, I can't go and get an opinion from the Attorney General on that. So, our attorneys knew Brian Bosman. Brian Bosman was and still is the Speaker of the House. And so, Brian Bosman did us a favor and went to the Attorney General's Office, because only elected official can ask for an opinion. And so, this nine-page, typical lawyerese, nine pages is the legal, that's why it's made back, that's why the response is made to Brian. But basically, it says that any funds I put on behalf of my clients, cities, towns, schools, are covered by the PDIF. They hold the same weight and merit as the funds if Ed puts them in, in any one of your local banks. Next tab is just a list of some of the clients we have right now. And feel free to contact any of those folks and, you know, see what their experience has been with us. And the last tab is just what our yields have been for the last, last year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Now, you're talking about that PDIF, kind of like an insurance. Is there a max on that? I mean, it's like FDIC has a?
Well, yeah, FDIC has a max, but no, well, these, that has nothing to do with us, but that with the state, you know. That PDIF, I'll back up and give you a little history about it. A very long time ago, banks used to be charged a fee for all the public funds that they used to hold on a monthly basis. And that fee was charged by the state and went into this PDIF fund, okay? And then, at some point in time, I'm sure it was the Banking Association said, hey, we're kind of tired of this fee. Already got $300 million sitting there. Isn't that enough? And so, the state decided to do away with that fee. So, that 300 million has been there for as long as I know, and I've been here 20 years. So, I'm not really sure when they stopped, stopped the fee. So, that 300 million has been sitting there earning interest, you know, and I don't know if it's ever been tapped. I mean, I don't think it's ever been tapped as far as I know.
But my question is, if the county treasurer invests more than what MZI or?
Oh, FDIC, right.
Would this have, that other insurance vote?
Yes, the funds.
What is the max that this state fund, what you call a PDIF?
The PDIF.
What, what would be the max of their liability?
It'd be, it'd be all 300 million, in theory. There was an interesting case where?
To each, to one individual entity?
Well, let me give you an example. When Irwin Union Bank, out in Columbus, was going bankrupt, before it was bought by whoever it was, First Financial, they had 450 roughly million dollars of public funds sitting in their bank. At that point in time, Richard Murdoch was the treasurer, realized that that would wipe out the entire PDIF. So, it depends on the situation. In that particular situation, that bank, when it went out of business, may have had 100 different entities that it had accounts for, and all of those entities would have, technically, would have been made whole, but they couldn't because they had 450 million versus the 300. But in theory, they, that PDIF is to make them whole again. Well, that prompted a whole nother situation with the state. Now, the state requires banks to collateralize, and it's a whole different discussion, but another level of protection. So, I don't know if that kind of answers your question, but that's, that's decided, that that, that fund is there to make the unit of government whole. That was an unusual situation. I don't think that, well, that won't happen anymore. I mean, not that.
Well, but still, FDIC would have came into that.
Well, they would have come in for the first 250,000. Anything over the 250,000, a PDIF would have.
That's what I was getting at. But with your, your private sector fund, it would be 100% of the?
Well, yeah, it would, it would be no different than if, if Ed put money in your local bank. The money I put in the local bank has the same weight and merit as your funds with the PDIF. And that's what that one letter from the Attorney General indicates.
But you don't have any sort of insurance fund, insurance coverage that covers a specific amount of money? It's just this PDIF fund that's?
Well, it's FDIC and the PDIF, no different than, yeah, no different than any other, you know, school district when they, when they deposit their money in a bank, county treasurers, any of those folks, it's the exact same.
And what's the maximum? That's what I'm trying to get at. What's the maximum that could be invested in your fund and be safe?
We've had, the PDIF is something I wouldn't have, where? Right, right. Well, we've had.
I'm trying to find out if the PDIF has the same cutoff amount as FDIC?
Oh, it doesn't.
Or will it go above that?
Well, it, it will go above it. We've had, we've had one client put in, put in a little over 100 million dollars at one time.
Oh, yeah. I don't see anything in here. Are there fees involved?
The, the yield that we give right now, 2%, is net of all fees. So, we don't, we don't charge a fee per se, I mean, directly where you actually write a check. Our yield is a 2% to the client right now. So, we may have a gross yield of roughly 215, 2.15% or 2.18%. And anything below, and so, the difference, we use the difference in order to pay for our operation. So, what we found out over the years is, of course, people hate, hate to be nibbled and dined to death and be feed to death. So, what we do is, we reduce the yield that we pay the client, and then, we make, we run our operations on that, on that difference. So, the client will never see a fee, and we don't even, we don't charge for even wiring, wiring money back to folks.
So, if we put our rainy day fund in your financial group, CRF, yes, whatever it is, if we put our rainy day fund in there and we needed to use that for, we'll say, operating expenses throughout the year, would we be allowed to draw on that?
Anything.
On a monthly basis?
Absolutely.
So, we could put 500,000 in and draw 50,000 or so a month?
Yes, sir.
And we'd still be getting the?
2%.
2%.
Yes, sir. Right now, we have a lot of school districts that throw their, you know, when they get their state distribution, they'll throw it in, and every two weeks or once a month, they draw it down as they, as they, as they need for that operation. Oh, absolutely.
They're allowed to do that even though it's officially appropriated?
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah. It's appropriate for the school, but the school has every right to use those dollars, I mean, to use those dollars and invest those dollars until the time that they need them. You know, they're funded for six months. So, yeah, the more they can get interest-wise on that, obviously, school, school districts' budgets are really tight these days. Every dollar really counts. Yeah, that's why, when they, when they get a distribution with the state, they put it in our fund right away, because that's the greatest number of dollars they have, and so, the greatest number of dollars are earning the 2%. And then, slowly, as time goes, goes on for the next six months, they draw it down and waiting for their next distribution from the state. But that way, they utilize their, the most amount of cash they have and get the best rate of return and generate the most number of dollars.
Do you have a minimum amount?
We do not.
None?
None.
No minimum at all?
No. In fact, a funny story.
How do you draw it down until the end of the year?
Doesn't matter.
It's still, you start over the next year?
Yeah. Yeah, I, the two funny stories I tell is, I've got two guys, two, two clients that have been in my fund for probably eight years now. They both had construction funds. So, their construction projects ended, and one account is down to a little over $10,000, and the other one is a little over $5,000. To be quite, and we've never charged them a fee. We've never charged them a dormant fee. They haven't touched the money in probably now four or five years. The construction project's over. To be quite candid, it cost me more money to manage that and to send out the statements than any kind of money we could ever earn off of that, those, those small dollars. But that's just an indication that there is no, there is no minimum.
There's no kind of sign-up fee or fee to get out of it?
No, sir.
We won't do that?
No, sir.
So, this is just a clone of a money market, and you only are allowed to invest in money markets? Or how do you invest this money to prove to me that it isn't a risk?
Well, I can send you the financial statements that are, that our auditor showed you, that our auditor, that our auditor has, has created on a yearly basis. Again, you, State Board of Accounts comes in every year. If the State Board of Accounts comes in and saw that I wasn't abiding by Indiana Code 513, which is statute that we're, we're required to adhere to, they would have closed me down a long time ago.
Well, one of the things that comes to my mind when I first was talking to Ed about this briefly, is Ball State, at first, I didn't know any of the actual facts. You just have one to get in the newspaper, which, you know what that means. But the fact was, they did lose a few million bucks.
More than a few.
In an investment, something.
Yeah.
And that's bad for folks like you, because everybody's like, sell cars, you're a car salesman, it would not matter which brand. And if you're in the money business, or some kind of a banker or investor, and that scares me, because I treat county money better than I do my own, to be quite honest about it, because it's other people's money. That was my young training as a child. And growing up is that if it's not yours, you're responsible for it. You better be careful.
Right. I have the same view as you, and if I may expand on that. The difference is this, those folks from Ball State sent money to individuals or individuals' firm. You never send money to me. I'm not allowed to touch your money. You send your money to a custodian, which is US Bank. US Bank has an agreement with me to do, to hold funds on your behalf. I can't touch your money? I can't, I can't call up US Bank and say, hey, wire me a million dollars out of this account. I'm not authorized to transfer any funds whatsoever. Only the people that are on your account and whoever you're assigned to can transfer money. And I'm not allowed to do that, and there's a contract between US Bank and myself.
I, I have a question for Ed. Is the Finance Committee of the County still the treasurer and the county commissioners?
That is correct.
Then, you meet every January?
Particularly the first meeting in a year, in January.
Okay. Has this been brought to the county commissioners?
The, the arrangements were sent to the county commissioner's attorney, and they suggested presenting this to the council.
I guess I, I don't understand.
This is in our local agreement. Before, your approval first, then, we'll go to the county commissioners. John Brooke and I went through this and agreed that that was the proper procedure.
Oh, I guess I thought the commissioners and the treasurer was the fight, was the financial committee for the county.
It's, the interlo, this particular requires the fiscal body to approve.
Oh, oh, I'm not sure I.
To allow the commissioners to?
And then, the executive, right.
So, as you all, then, you are right. But this is very critical.
In other words, it might pass. Let's speak a little bit about the Ball State situation. The investor, which was the keeper of Ball State, invested in instruments that were not approved by the state. That's what created the issue. So, the, like, treasurer bought and invested in things that were not state-approved. So, in this case, we're only investing state-approved instruments.
How much money are we talking about?
Well, we have, we have $8 million that we invest. Right now, we're looking at probably about a million or half a million to start with.
What, what are you currently doing with the money? Where is it? Where is it now?
Well, we have four different accounts that we use, a couple banks and a couple investment groups. We're less currently.
Do you have the rates that you're?
Yeah. This one's, this one's about 7% more than the highest rate we're getting on Ed's.
About how much?
About 7% more.
7%?
Mm-hmm.
Four, okay.
What do you mean 7%?
Well, the rate of return is about 2%, or it's about 7% higher than we're currently getting.
Oh, I got you. You can get a seven-month CD at local savings, a lower 2% right now.
Are you bidding your money, or is it sitting in the checking account, probably making the same amount?
Well, when you say bid, we all actually, we typically bring the different institutions in and discuss with them, you know, we're at the marketplace. Some of them are longer-term, some are money markets like this one here, and some of them are two or three years out.
Are you familiar with the, there was, I remember this has been years ago, but the treasurer, I believe it was maybe prior to you, did something similar to this, but I think it was a longer-term investment. Do you know what that was, or did you refresh our memory of that?
I invested with a mutual, back here in town, and it was, some were mutual funds, some were CDs, but they were longer-term and were two to four years. So, that's, that's what occurred there.
Have you checked with any of the local banks to see if they offer anything similar to this?
We should bring them in every three to six months and review, you know, what happened best in each one.
Have, have you had a chance to review all this, or?
I've just seen this today.
Okay. Well, I guess, I guess I would.
I did, based on that format that they provided, I essentially filled in the blanks to prepare the resolution.
I was gonna say, a lot of us just received this yesterday, but we've been kind of talking about it for a while, but this is the first time that we've got a look at this. I guess I would recommend that we take this report under advisement and maybe get some questions answered if, if that's agreeable, whatever, buddy.
That's fine.
I don't think there's a motion to do that.
I don't think there's a motion on the floor.
No, no motion.
You can take, to take?
Just put it on the agenda for next positive.
Okay.
Consider it.
Do we have any kind of a resolution, or?
Yeah.
We do? Okay. Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we tabled the resolution.
We didn't table it. We waited.
Oh, we just did do it, yeah, okay.
Waited until?
We waited until later. Most, yeah.
Ed had to be on the count.
You pronounce your name Fritsch?
Fritsch, yes, sir.
Oh. You make your money then as sort of an arbitrage, method of arbitrage? Is that a good word?
No, I don't think that's a good word. It would be a spread between what our gross yield is and the yield that we provide to client, okay? We know we need to run our operation, we need to go up anywhere from 15 to 18 basis points. And so, depending on, and then, we need to be competitive in the marketplace. And so, we think 2% right now is extremely competitive. I mean, I think one of the highest rates Ed's getting right now is a 1.80. So, in our business, we call it 20 basis points. 20 basis points on overnight money is a huge, huge number. If you go out three or four or five or six months and get 2% or 2 and 1/4, 2 and 1/2, but now, you're locking up your money for six months. So, there's a trade-off. Do you want to lock up your money that long, or you, or do you want to be able to have the flexibility to have your money? I'm no different than Ed. I've got a lot of, lots of assets under management, so I ladder out a portfolio, because I know I won't need all my money, so I can go out a little longer in some instances. Sometimes, I stay shorter. So, I don't necessarily think that word is the right word. It's just a spread between what the gross yield you can, we can generate and what we think a competitive yield out in the marketplace is.
You're not in the mutual funds or anything like?
Not allowed to, no. Nor are you.
Well, I personally don't.
No, not you personally. I mean, units of government. Units of government are not allowed.
I'm not a lot of mutual funds. I'm not a real fan of them. That overnight rate is kind of what the Federal Reserve operates with. That overnight rate is kind of what the Federal Reserve operates with banks on, so you operate similar to they, the way they do.
I have an awful lot of rates tied to Fed, the Fed funds rate through, through banks. Actually, I funded a fifth type of investment.
Is this asking too much, or prying into your private, what's the value of your company?
That's a big question, I don't know, I've never, I mean, I don't know, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I mean, if you're asking how many assets are under management, we have over roughly $100 million of assets.
Okay, and under management?
Under management, right. Probably a little over, still, right.
Well, I just, I'm old school, I like to see whether companies work as much as its debt for one thing. You know, that $100 million you have under management is somebody else's money, so that's really not an asset, your company.
Right, right, it's not, right. But we have no debt, I mean, my company doesn't have no debt.
Well, some do.
Oh, no, some do, yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't.
You look at the stock reports, a lot of them have bank debts, more than their net worth or their book value, some cases.
Ed, have you talked to any other similar companies that do the same thing as what this one does, to just get other estimates, or...
Makes on this list?
No, you mean a similar company like this?
Yes.
There probably is.
And we've got, we've got a couple that we currently invest with.
What's that?
We actually invest with a couple of, for example, Trust Indiana, where it currently set up and investing with a state fund.
Okay. And that rate is less than 2%, obviously, or even the year, so, okay. Are you okay, is there any timeline? I mean, are you okay if we kind of consider this information and...
That's fine, it's just, it's money, Tommy's money.
Well, I think we're just wanting to make sure, I don't, I don't know a lot about this and hope to get up to speed for next month, I guess. And I'd like to have Bill have an opportunity to take a look at this and match it up with the resolution and make sure that...
I think it certainly sounds interesting, warrant consideration.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
It's been very informative, I'm very much less skeptical than I was when you came today. So I appreciate your coming and informing us, and I'm, like Scott, I'd like to digest this, if you don't mind, and then...
No, certainly understand. Hopefully, it gives you some comfort, you know, the state has already approved it for them, and so I think that's a big selling point, the Attorney General has decided it's appropriate for them, and I think it's, that's why I put that letter in there, because I think this is what I come...
What you guys do just isn't statewide, this is nationwide?
No, this is, this is just statewide.
Okay.
These aren't unusual, these types of schools are technically called local government investment schools, it's a fancy term.
Okay.
But they're state-specific.
Okay.
And we're not unusual here in Indiana, almost every state has them, and most states have multiple schools. Illinois has like four or five, Colorado is four, California has like eight, Texas has five. I mean, it's not unusual.
How many does Indiana have?
Two.
Okay, correct.
And it's kind of like a Chevy or a Ford, you know, cars are built differently, we all manage money a little differently, and, you know, it's just another option, I'm not always going to be the best rate, I happen to be a good rate right now, but, you know, my personal thoughts is as fuzzy as the next guy's.
Well, sure. Like oil.
I see, excuse me, I see four county treasurers, are there more counties?
That's all I'm aware of right now.
What was that question?
I see four county treasurers, I wonder if there'd be more than four counties.
Okay, there are four counties in Indiana that use this, okay.
Clark, Warren.
Six counties.
Was there six?
Five. I can see the value on funds that we use, you know, might at the end of the year, we may not have much left in the account, but it lets us draw interest on money that you may not be getting very much at all for. You draw it, then you pay your bills, just like my wife does, she, when she pays her bills, she goes to the other checking account and moves it over, that would do that mostly to keep people out of our practice. That way you draw a little interest on it while it's just sitting there. Or if you've got CDs, you have to wait on the...
What's your...
Thank you, Ed, very much.
Thank you. Well, I think the sad part about this whole thing is, we used to have a relationship with our, with our local banks. We no longer have any local banks, and I hate that.
Well, that's part of what's moving forward. I had a professor one time, his name was Binstone, I'll never forget him, the first day of class, he walks in the back door, he was late for class, he had a pair of runner pants and a t-shirt on, and he said, you're going to have big business, big government, and big unions, and the sooner you get used to that, the better off you're going to be. And I've never forgotten that. I'm overwhelmed at how things have grown in my lifetime and how different this all is. And I've experienced a lot of different things in a lot of different businesses, mostly always just personal, but I worked for General Motors for 12 and 1/2 years, my first run out, and it's big now, it's so big that most people can't comprehend it. We just have to go on with our lives. And like I like to preach a little bit, I said, what, what people want today, everybody has their own American, American dream, we don't all have the same American dream, but we don't want a government telling us what to do, we want a government to tell us how to do it and let us alone, you know, and that's our education. We need our education on how to do it and then let us go out and do it. But anymore, we've got so many people in government that want to continue to tell us not only what to do, but how to do it, when to do it, and just sometimes sit down and add up all the taxes you pay in a year, add the sales tax and everything, and you're going to be surprised, you're living on about 45% of your earnings, that's all said and done. That's why I'm curious as to how you squeeze out enough to afford to make, run a business, because that's big money you're talking about. Very few, very skinny margins, right?
Skinny margins, but large dollars.
Yeah. That's, that's your, that's your value, yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I wouldn't like to change my vote on Resolution 2019 of 34, no.
I do welcome all of you to stop in my office, call me anytime, any questions.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I've got two quick things, Mr. President, that's fine. I guess it's been three weeks now, all of us were invited to the 4H Annual Dinner, and I actually attended, and there were over 300 people who attended that event, it was awesome. And Molly Hunt actually took the time while she was presenting to thank the council for the budget we approved for 2020, and that place erupted, like, it was, I was the only council member there, so it was a little embarrassing, but I'm very, it made my heart really happy to see how much that was really appreciated by those children and their parents. I had multiple kids come up and thank me for being there, so that was really cool. And then also, too, completely unrelated, the Indiana Blood Bank has been, like, I don't know if anyone else is donors, but they've been calling and calling and calling, so if you are O positive or O negative, you might want to stop by Mondays and Saturdays, they are at the, at the mall. So I donated yesterday, but saves three lives every time you donate, so I know they really need it.
Thank you. No other new business, audience comments?
Okay.
President's remarks, I think I've already made mine today. Do you have, Chris, anyone else from the council that'd like to speak?
Think everybody can?
I was gonna wear a fancy tie and a fancy shirt, some colorful socks today, but they're all kind of spring stuff, and I didn't, just to be ornery.
You'd look good in some pastel, argyle.
Move to a chair?
Second. Well played.
All of us say aye?
Aye.
All of us say aye?